Test, test.
Ten over ten.
Nice.
Commissioner Allen, you're good to start anytime.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we'll call to order the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission Business Meeting. We have three council members on Zoom. Commissioner Ebbler, Commissioner Shelton, and me, Commissioner Allen. And then we have three commissioners in person, Commissioner Steinman, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Chapel. We have three items on the agenda tonight, in addition to public comment. And we'll start off by asking if any of the commissioners have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to disclose. Okay, hearing none. Then we'll move on to general public, public comment. This is a time for anyone to give their comments. They'll be given three minutes. And if you can just provide your name or the comment card that has your name, that way we can get your, get you into the record. General public comment is a time for anyone to give their comments on an item that, that they would like to discuss or comment on that's not on the agenda. So if you're here to discuss anything for one of the three agenda items, then please wait for that item to come up in the meeting. So Mike, are you able to kind of run through the comment cards?
Sure.
Since I'm not.
Is anyone here to comment on anything not on the agenda tonight? Nothing, Chair.
And then Chair Allen, just to let you know, Commissioner Anderson has the comment cards that were turned in. So when we get to the point of public comment on the agenda items, I think she's prepared to assist with reading those if you'd like her to.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so if we don't have any, do we have any public comment online?
We do not, no.
All right, then we'll go ahead and close the general public comment and move on to our first business item. That's Project CUP twenty-two zero one zero, a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a conditional use permit request by Range Architecture on behalf of Block Builders LLC to operate a professional office in an existing building at six eight two six South Highland Drive in the residential office R O Zone. Staff, if you want to go ahead and provide the presentation on this item.
Yeah, I am ready to go through these slides. Just want to make sure, Commissioner Allen, are you seeing them okay from your end?
Yep, they are on the screen. Thank you.
Great, we'll just scroll through these. And we did go through these in our work session, but for the benefit of anyone who's joining us for the first time in this meeting, as well as just to refresh your memories, we'll go through these again, just in a little bit less detail perhaps. So this project is a conditional use permit request. Our subject property is sixty-eight twenty-six South Highland Drive. We see it here on the map in the blue, and I'm actually going to see if I can maybe get rid of this. Or it might not let me. The view is a little bit weird for everyone here, but we'll make it work. And the specific action requested is conditional use approval for professional office space within an existing building. And staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with some added conditions that we will go through. All right, so this aerial here just gives kind of a different view of the property, again, shown in some blue outlines. A little bit more detail on the office space request. It would be for Block Builders LLC, which is a general contracting company. They specialize in out-of-state commercial and retail builds. I will add that we have a few representatives for the application here tonight, so if the commission would like to bring them up at any point, they can certainly clarify questions that you may have about their proposal. The applicant plans to renovate the interior of this existing building just to make it function more feasibly as office space and then also make some minor cosmetic changes to the building's exterior. Their office would function Monday through Friday from eight AM to six PM. The space would be dedicated for six employees from their accounting and estimating team. They are not taking clients at the site, so it would be limited to that office staff. The applicant has also noted in their narrative for the application that no construction materials, vehicles, or other equipment would be stored on site for the jobs they work on. They have facilities in South Salt Lake and then also in Texas to take care of this purpose. So looking at the zoning for this parcel, it's zoned residential office. And in this zone, professional offices are allowed, have conditional uses. As far as the parking goes for the site, the city's parking ordinance, which relies on a ratio system based on square footage, requires seven parking stalls for the site. The existing layout has three with one ADA stall. So to kind of accommodate that seven stalls, they've proposed adding four stalls to the front of the site, which is the east of the site. And plan to maintain the existing ADA stall, which does meet the ratio requirements for ADA parking. We've included a recommended condition of approval that the applicant coordinate with the Public Works Department to obtain their formal approval of this parking layout. We discussed in the work session just some concerns about the dimension of those stalls and their placement with ingress and egress. It was, I think, worth noting in the previous meeting that this site fronts on Highland Drive, but it's the frontage section of that street, so it's not the main arterial. Meaning that there is less of a busy flow of traffic for folks to enter and exit the site into. I think the, the concerns about having sufficient space to, to pull in and, and back out are, are still very valid. But do want to just note, it's not on the really busy section of Highland itself. Moving on to some of our other development standards, the building again is existing. It was constructed in nineteen fifty-four. And just really typical to structures of this time that well predate the city's incorporation. It's, it's got some legal non-conforming setbacks. The applicant's not proposing to do in addition to the building or alter these setbacks, so there's no increase to the non-conformity of the building. The existing lot coverage and the existing structure height are both fully compliant with zoning. And there's no increase proposed to either of those criteria. In terms of architectural and landscaping alteration, we see a little bit more change in this category. As mentioned, the applicant plans to do an interior renovation just to provide more functional floor plan space. But more pertinent to sort of our, our city process, they plan to do some non-structural cosmetic changes to the building, including new paints, new roof shingles, new exterior door, and some updated landscaping. The specifications and detailed analysis of these aesthetic changes will be reviewed by the Architectural Review Commission. And we've included, just kind of as an extra layer of coordination, a recommended condition that this take place. But just for your note tonight, kind of in, in the commission's process in, in considering the conditional use itself, we've confirmed that the total percentage of landscaping has been allocated on site and the existing buffers have been maintained. We haven't received any public comment on this project to date. It is on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, so I can come back to this slide whenever the commission's ready to open that. I will just conclude with our recommendation of approval. We've included four conditions here meant to sort of mitigate the proposed use. We've clarified that any improvements to the architecture or the landscaping must be approved by the Architectural Review Commission. Building permit must be pulled for any applicable work. The applicant needs to receive that approval from the Public Works Department for the parking lot layout, as well as any civil, any relevant civil components of the site. And then just if a trash enclosure is added down the road, it needs to meet the screening and proximity requirements. We've got your model motions there, but I'll just maybe move back to the public comment slide and let you guys discuss. And then if you're, whenever you're ready, open up that public hearing.
All right, do any of the commissioners have any questions? Or any discussion before we open up public comment? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any? Oh, yeah.
I, I was wondering, and I, I'm sorry if I'm getting this out of order, but I was wondering if we could hear from the, the applicant's representative about the parking stalls that we discussed in the, the work plan. I believe it was six and seven.
Yeah.
Going to pull up that diagram and then I'll turn the dais over to the applicant. There you go.
Oh, sorry, four and five.
Okay, yes, that's up there and then whichever one of you wants to come up and speak to that.
So the point of discussion, as you heard, I'm sure, was how people get back out of these stalls. I just wanted to know what the plans were for the future of that.
Derek Wilson, Range Architecture. What we are, have tried to do is make this project as compliant as possible. And so we've actually had some preliminary conversations with Adam to try and get it. And so we went through several iterations. There were some conversations like we don't want to back out onto the frontage road. And so being that the building's non-conforming, we're not tearing anything down, setbacks, we did our best. And so at a certain point, we had to just apply so that we could have conversation, further conversations with, with him moving forward. So really what you see is there is one of about eight iterations and brought it into the best compliance that we could, so.
Do you have any plans for onsite storage of snow removal?
We can find locations. This is a preliminary, so if there was a, some additional storage back in the back there, but typical to a residence of what it was, it could just be thrown onto the landscape back in the back. So I don't know if the, if the prior owner had anything on record of how that was done, but I'm sure we can come up with a solution with engineering.
So sorry, to ju- jump back a little bit, I just, I wanted to understand, was the intent to provide, because I, I noticed that this diagram, you know, you said there's multiple iterations and this diagram kind of makes it appear that there's maybe a place to back out so that people could, could pull forward. Is that the intent? I guess that's kind of what I was getting.
Yeah, the intent was the, the landscape strip in between the stalls four, five, six, and seven, and, and Highland Drive had to be reduced. It's still meeting the, the requirements of that. But yes, the idea is that those far, those four enter off the two curb cuts, part front bumper to front bumper, and then we tried to give the typical twenty-four foot backout space, typical of any parking lot. And so that's the idea on those. And then one, two, and three in the back would just have to back out and, and then lead out with their front bumper onto the frontage road.
Sorry, sorry, if you may, I, I think we want to make sure that your comments can be heard by all, if you'd want to join.
I, I, that is Stu, the owner. What he's saying is rather than have both, have all the cars facing each other, the first two employees could pull into the front stall and then the others could pull in behind it. And then when they leave, they would just leave front, you know, front direction out without any backing out. It's a management solution, but.
Yeah, the, the tandem parking stalls are addressed in the parking, in the zoning ordinance, nineteen eighty-something. And if you are claiming them as tandem, then you can't count the other two, I think is how it reads. But in, independent of that, I think the parking just needs to be reviewed as staff indicated with Public Works. I, I understand that you're trying to make it compliant and it, it does seem like this is a reasonable approach. But maybe still needs a little bit of work with Public Works.
Yeah, and assuming approval tonight, we'll probably reach out to Adam and start that conversation as early as tomorrow, just to, you know, I know how busy everyone is.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? All right, well, if, if we do, we'll let you come back up and
Thank you.
Thank you. Should we open it up to public comment?
Yeah, I'm just flipping your slides back. I hope you guys don't mind me kind of jogging back and forth, but there's that if you are ready for it.
Okay, I have public comment cards. I'm sensing most of these are for the gate. Is there anyone here with public comment regarding this project? If so, come on up. You don't need to, you don't need to, you don't need to have a card filled out.
Okay, hi, my name is Danette Canelli. I live on the property that is on the backside of this piece of property that you're talking about. And I would like to know when the plan changes. Do we get notified? I'm just kind of curious, because when the men were there previously, and I spoke to them in person and asked them what they were going to do at the place, he said he was the builder and he wanted to make it two and a half stories. Now, I don't think this was just a random stranger walking down the street, because he said he'd bought the property. So I'm somewhat interested in that. Also, I'd like to know if there's any change to the fencing that backs up against my property. And another thing I'd like to know about is the neighboring property, which is the Pilates Studio, for some reason feel like it's their duty to have a security light blazing all night long into everybody's backyard. I value my privacy. I've lived there for sixty years. I like it when it's dark. I would like to have my backyard dark. So, I mean, I understand maybe if they have to put lights if they're lower, but I really don't like the lights blazing into my backyard all night long. And they say they're not going to change the building. I have my doubts. So when the plan does change, do they notify the surrounding property owners so we can address it at that time?
This isn't like a back and forth question. Okay, so I'll make a statement. I would like to know when the plan changes and the building plan changes. How do I make my public comment? That's a question or whatever. I mean, these are my concerns that I'm stating. I don't know who I'm talking to. I'm not supposed to ask a question, so I'm making a statement. I'd like my privacy in my backyard. I'd like the fence to remain at least the height that it is. I'd like to have a fence between me and the property, which generally they do anyway. I would like to be reassured, the last people that came in told me they were going to put up a block wall and they end up spend spraying insecticide or whatever and killing off all my plants, my choke cherry and everything that was there kind of as landscaping and privacy. And then they spray it and it's all dead, although it was on my property. And I'm not saying these people are planning on doing that, but this has been my experience of what's actually happened. And I was told a number of things, that we'll get an eight-foot-high block wall, and I got a cheesy, you know, chain link fence with vinyl slats in it. That was the previous people. I was told they wouldn't disturb my property, but they sprayed stuff and killed all my plants. So now I'm somewhat suspicious, although these people didn't do it. I don't even know these people. But I'm just requesting that my property be left alone or in the same condition it is right now. That's just my comment. Thank you.
We'll just note from a staff perspective, we're happy to follow up with you to answer any questions kind of out of this meeting, if, if you'd like as a property owner. So we can take care of answering those questions at any point.
Anyway.
Joshua Spencer, just a question as far as this seems to be a temporary proposal. The question I'd have is, will we have an additional opportunity to have public comment on the architectural and landscaping aspects of the project? My email is listed on the card. And then and then also wanted to know what recourse the neighbors might have in case the proposed use or the actual use is not in line with the proposed use. Thank you.
Are there any other comments regarding this? Here, I don't see any other.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? For, for my benefit, Mike, would you, could you talk a little bit about the conditional use permit restrictions and how if, you know, what, what we're providing a conditional use for? And then if they end up taking the, you know, if, if plans change in the future, how that conditional use permit is impacted?
Sure, yeah, thank you. So conditional uses in the residential office zone are any use except for single-family residential, which means if they ever use the property for anything other than what's being proposed tonight, should the commission approve it, any different use will have to come through the same exact process again, related to changes in the building. This property is in the Gateway Overlay District, which means any modification to the building needs to go through the city's Architecture Review Commission. As proposed right now, it is going through that process, but, but not being added on to in any extensive way. What I'll note though is if they ever expanded vertically, that would impact their square footage, which would impact their parking requirement, which would then require it to come back to this exact process for site plan approval again. So any extensive change that affects, that drastically affects the, the use or the, the size of the building would come back through planning commission. Any architectural change at all, fencing, lighting, you know, updating the exterior of the building, new landscaping, has to go through the Architecture Review Process, which are, which are also public meetings.
And so if we approve the conditional use for this, we are approving a, an office function here? Or are we approving specifically a contractor's office?
No, an administrative office use.
Okay. And so in the past, what other conditional uses have been applied to this property?
There's been a home for individuals with disabilities at the site until about twenty fifteen, and then a pharmacy until about twenty seventeen, based on business licensure records.
Okay, and then if we approve, it would then be an administrative office in addition to those things?
Correct, an administrative office is the use for your consideration tonight.
Right. All right, any other discussion? All right, any other discussion? Can I have a motion to close the public comment? If we don't see any others?
Move to close the public comment.
Okay.
All right, all in favor on the public comment being closed?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. All right, do we have a motion for the item at hand?
Yes, I move to approve project CUP twenty-two dash zero one zero based on the findings and subject to the recommended conditions outlined in the project staff report dated September seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Very none. I will go through a roll call. We'll do in person first. Commissioner Steinman?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapel?
Yes.
Then online, Commissioner Ebbler?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelton? Commissioner Shelton, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Allen, yes. So we have approved that. Let's move on to the second agenda item. Let me pull that up. Second agenda item is project CUP twenty-two zero one three, a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a request to replace three existing traffic calming gates with crash gates located at ninety ninety-four South Galette Lane and two other locations. All right, is staff prepared a presentation on this?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This will be very similar to the presentation in the work session for those that have, were in attendance there. But I'll give a summary and an analysis as well as recommendations to the commission. This is a conditional use application to amend a specific fencing plan approval from a planned unit development for the Givernay subdivision, which was originally approved by the city's planning commission back in two thousand and fifteen. This is just updating that one, one graphic on the fencing plan that was approved as part of that project. Everything else is remaining as is. The specific request is to replace three existing mechanized traffic calming gates that are located on the northern boundary of the Givernay subdivision, directly adjacent to the existing subdivision to the north that is located on public streets. There's a road that connects between the two developments in three different areas. These traffic calming gates exist at those connection points. The request is to replace those mechanized traffic calming gates with locked crash gates that allow for emergency vehicle access only. I will clarify here, the Givernay subdivision is a private development with private roads that are owned and maintained separate from the city. They're not, they're not considered city public infrastructure. The roads to the north are public streets that are owned and maintained by the city of Cottonwood Heights. Shown now are the existing traffic calming gates located at those three transition points from Givernay to the adjacent neighborhood to the north. These are gates shown in the closed position and what happens right now is a car pulls up and there's a sensor. And after a delay and kind of a slow retraction, those gates lower vertically into the ground to allow cars to pass through and then they raise again when the cars have passed through. So they're, they're traffic calming in nature. They do allow regular vehicle access, but they really, really slow traffic down and they take a long time to lower. Also, I'll point out, because this will come back later, you can see gates, kind of wrought iron gates on the side of the traffic calming gates that allow for pedestrian access. Those are unlocked gates, so the roads are accessible to pedestrians and no changes are proposed to that. The proposed replacement is similar to what's shown on the screen now. This is actually from a different fire access road within Givernay, but just more simple non-mechanized crash gates that would have a locking mechanism that's only accessible by emergency vehicles. Some background with the Givernay Planned Unit Development and why this request is being made tonight. The subdivision was originally approved as a conditional use in two thousand and fifteen. The development today is ninety percent plus completed with the last handful of homes actively under construction right now. So substantially completed. The original PUD Planned Unit Development contained a fencing plan that showed these three traffic calming gates in addition to other fences and gates within the development. That was one of the requirements of the PUD ordinance. So amending that is considered a conditional use amendment, which is why it's in front of you tonight. In the time since the gate, the traffic coming gates were constructed in two thousand and nineteen. Sorry, I'm ahead of myself. At the time in, in two thousand and fifteen, there was substantial concern from the northern single family neighborhood of those connecting roads creating traffic and pass through and safety issues. They, you know, they were used to living on a dead, on dead end roads before. So the traffic calming gates were what was approved to help mitigate that concern of high speeds and cut through traffic and things like that. After the project was approved, it was appealed by a number of different groups. Through that appeal process, as it worked its way through, it ended in a settlement agreement between Regal Homes and a group of appellants. That's a private settlement agreement between Regal and those residents. However, one of the terms in that agreement does relate to the traffic calming gates, specifically requiring them to take a minimum amount of time to lower. So, so they work effectively to substantially calm traffic. And then in the time since the gates have been constructed in two thousand and nineteen, they have consistently experienced malfunctions in need of repair. When the gates are not functioning properly, they default to the lowered position and they do not provide any sort of traffic calming because they're, they're just open. And then, you know, time to, to make sure those gates are repaired and wait for materials and parts and, and wait for labor from Regal Homes and from the Givernay HOA. That causes delays and causes frustration that the city hears from residents on both sides within Givernay and within the neighborhood to the north. When those gates are not functioning, we get a lot of calls about that and that's been a consistent issue really since they've been constructed. Next, we'll go through an impact analysis that staff looked at the various impacts that switching out the gates may have to make sure we're addressing and recommending mitigation for any negative impacts. The first one and maybe most important is emergency vehicle access. Those connections are critical and the connections to the neighborhood are required based on the number of homes in Givernay for fire code. However, the fire department is okay with crash gates. They have a specific provision in the fire code that as long as they have a key or some sort of mechanism to allow them to open those gates in case of emergency, they approve private gates and crash gates fairly regularly. So they have reviewed this proposal and subject to compliance with that applicable fire code, they have no problems with switching out the gates. The other one we looked at was, was City Public Works, specifically snow removal. The City Public Works Department stated that they don't, they don't interface right now with the existing traffic calming gates when they do snow removal. They, they remove snow down to the end of the, the public roads and they turn around and go back out the public, the public road subdivision. Givernay manages snow privately and they take care of it from the Givernay side of the gates. So the, the city, the Public Works Department does not have any issues with installation of crash gates. The, the gates also require, any, any change requires Architecture Review Commission approval because it's a planned unit development. That has been done. So the black kind of wrought iron crash gate design has been approved by that commission. And again, one of the impacts here is those gates malfunction frequently and cause frustration almost unanimously in that area. So this would be one way to resolve those concerns. Few more impacts, gate swinging. We are recommending as, as part of this consideration that if the planning commission approve it, it approves a condition that the gates only swing open to the south, which is, or nope, to the, yeah, to the south, which is into the Givernay side of the development and do not swing over and open onto the public roads. So essentially the, the impact is felt by the Givernay side. In, in the case that those gates need to be opened, they swing only open that way. Pedestrian access, again, that's not proposed to be changed at all. So pedestrian access is not an issue that will continue to be allowed as is today. Another concern that was raised were navigation concerns with service providers or visitors to an area or delivery vehicles, mail trucks, things like that. Apparently navigation apps sometimes will route cars through those connecting roads. The concern is if those fences or the gates are switched to not allow regular access, that now we'll have cars doing multi-point turns to turn around and leave the subdivisions on either side. We do have a recommended condition to hopefully mitigate this impact as best it can. And then again, encroachment into on-street parking areas. One of the conditions imposed should help alleviate this from the Givernay side when those gates swing open to ensure that swing zone is kept clear of vehicles at all times. So with, with that analysis done and the background, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use amendment to the Givernay Planned Unit Development, subject to the five conditions shown on screen. I'll go through those quickly. One, as we talked about, is that those gates only open to the Givernay side of the development. Two is that prior to installation, detailed plans are submitted for review by the city and the fire department. Three is that on-street parking restrictions, again, on the Givernay side are appropriately demarcated through red curb or signage, no parking signs or an acceptable combination of those in the area affected by the gate opening so that there aren't cars parked up against that. And I think based on our work session discussion, that could be expanded to ensure there aren't vehicles parked in the middle of the public street on the other side as well, which is a city requirement already, but it doesn't hurt to stipulate that. Four, signage shall be installed at the applicant's expense and to the satisfaction of city staff in the public subdivision at the beginning of those access roads that state clearly no through access for regular vehicles, which again, over time should help the turnaround issue, the navigation issues. People will see those signs and hopefully not, you know, not go down there. The same thing as part of condition four is being proposed as a condition within the Givernay side. We would leave that up to the Givernay HOA to decide where to place those signs, subject to approval by the city to ensure, you know, the same issue is avoided. And then five, even though it's a private development settlement agreement, we are recommending a condition that the applicant provide proper demonstration that the term, the, the replacement of the crash gates, which does affect one of the terms in that settlement agreement, is agreed upon by those original parties of that agreement. That concludes the staff summary and presentation. Are there any questions of staff?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Was it evaluated to maintain these gates and just turn it into a different, I guess, mechanical positions so they don't have to completely replace this gate?
That, that's not what was proposed, but I can say just from, from dealing with this over the past three years, they originally, it was the builder, Regal Homes, that we would call when there were issues. The HOA has since hired a property maintenance and a company. The response time has been better, but it still takes a long time and these, these gates, the way they work and with the change in temperatures and seasons and all the different variables, I think, I think there's detail in the applicant's narrative of all the various things that can go wrong. They, they're just trying to now move away from a maintenance headache. I don't know that there's a mechanized way to do it better. There, there are additional terms of how gates can swing open and things like that. So for traffic calming, the lowering of the gate was actually one of the more reasonable options, just logistically, it hasn't worked out very well.
Thank you.
Just clarification too, is that I know you talked a lot about fire authority taking away. Is that, do, does police also need to review it? Is that part of the city review?
Yeah, so it's emergency vehicles, which we'll verify it with the police, but, but usually the, the fire department, they're the ones with the fire trucks and the ambulances. So, so they have the fire code. There's not a, a city code that I'm aware of that's comparable. But, but we will absolutely win when the plans are submitted, we'll make sure the police see that as well.
Okay, and I know we, the other thing about the on-street parking on the non-PUD side, we talked about that in the work session about adding signs so that, that is not blocked.
Yeah, just.
From the, from, yeah, you know.
Yeah, no parking right in front of the gate in the middle of the road, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And the applicant is here to address the commission and then I know we have some public comments here for this one too.
All right, so we have the applicant. Come up.
There, they are at the, they're at the mic.
Yes, hello, my name's Dade Rose and I am with Regal Homes. I'm also the president of the Givernay Master Homeowners Association. And so I'm here on behalf of this application. Mike has done a good job of explaining the reasons for this process and why we think it is an effective and an important change that will benefit both the Givernay community as well as the community to our north, Golden Hills subdivision. Like to just respond to a couple of questions and comments from the work session that I heard. And I'm happy to respond to any of your questions as I go as well, if there's more that you would like to discuss. The first was, there was a question about snow removal. The snow in Givernay, the plan for the, by the engineers was to have snow kept on the common areas. And so that's where our, our snow plow companies will remove the snow. That's generally on the parks. We can be on parking strips. And then in our detention basin, that's the principal area where snow is intended to go. So that, hopefully that answers your question. And then as far as the gates themselves, the gate that we'll be using, Mike showed it earlier, it's, we already have the exact gate that we would utilize. It's the same gate that is, that was previously approved and is the crash gate between our Bizarro neighborhood and our Monet neighborhood. Mike, I don't know if you want me to pull up your, your plans here, but if you wanted to show that gate, that, thank you. You can go back to that. So that would be the, that would be the new gate. And it's an attractive gate. It's in a gate that quite frankly, we hope never has to be used. Really, the only purpose for it would be if there was some sort of fire emergency. With that being said, I'd love to reserve a little bit of time after the public comment portion, just so I can respond to any other questions or comments that may arise. And also I'm here to respond to any of your questions.
I have a question for you. You know, I, I was curious about, you know, that is a nice looking gate, but we are talking about, and make, correct me if I'm wrong, essentially reestablishing the existing neighborhood, the Golden Hills neighborhood as dead ends that, so I was just curious about the idea of why not go to a swinging mechanized gate rather, you know, obviously the mechanism was the problem with the original gates. Can you tell us more, a little, a little bit more about why go to a non-mechanized gate?
The difficulty with the mechanized gate is obstructing access to some of the homes that are either in Golden Hills subdivision currently, they're already built and they have their driveways very close to the gate or to some of the Givernay homes that also have some driveways that are fairly close. It would make it a little bit of a tight pinch.
And then the, I would presume that the side opening gate was also not possible, is that?
The side opening gate, I'm not clear.
Meaning rolling sideways?
Oh, yeah, there, there wasn't room to have it retract all the way into like a side yard. It would be on someone's private property.
It's kind of a necessity, really.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had asked Mike this a little bit as well, but with the current gate, replacing that and kind of going through that process, going through this whole process, you know, it drops down. If it's not being used as much, I imagine that you've gone through that analysis. If it's not being used, is it still going to malfunction as often? So I guess instead of replacing the gates in completion, I really like eco-friendliness. So not replacing those gates and just keeping those gates. Have you guys evaluated that perspective, just keeping those gates and then making it mechanized just for emergency vehicles?
No, haven't as much, just because we want to have the dependability there. And that's been a big drive. And that's been a, a big driver, quite frankly, as to why we're coming to you and saying we want to amend our plan, have these crash gates. Uh, we started off with, uh, a company, a Utah company, and they've done good work. We had vetted them out and even went and saw some of their projects in Southern Utah, as well as here in Northern Utah, where they were dealing with snow. But for whatever reason, um, there were just many difficulties as far as maintaining the gate functionality. And ultimately we ended up moving on from them. We hired a second uh, gate maintenance company that also deals with similar gates. They've been working with it and, and there was some improvement on that front, but not enough where we would want to risk having people endangered in any sort of way. We just want to make sure that it works, it functions. And the crash gates just work really well. People know how to use them. Yep. Okay. So if I may just reserve a little time for the end, if there are questions later. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion before we open up public comment? Okay, Commissioner Anderson, do you want to go ahead and start the cards?
Sure. Um, the first one is for Mike Lynn Neal.
Hi, I'm Mike Lynn Neal and I live on Breton Lane directly across from one of the crash gates. Other block gates. And I totally support this recommendation. Um, two points I'd like to make that haven't been mentioned yet is the safety of the current gates. Um, while they do get stuck very frequently, they don't always go with a down position. Uh, very often they're a foot off the ground. And there's not very good lighting in that area. So at nighttime, there's no traffic lights or no street lights. And if cars are coming through there, if they don't know that that gate's there, they could easily crash into it. So that's one safety concern. And the second is there are children in the neighborhood that like to play on the gate and ride the gate up and down. And we as residents are concerned that they might fall off. So just two safety concerns that I wanted to mention that haven't previously been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Kevin Dolan.
Evening. I'm Kevin Dolan and, um, I live right, uh, adjacent to the middle gate as, as well. So we, uh, we see all the interactions. We know the whole history of these, but we are fully in, in favor of the crash gates. Um, the one part I wanted to mention, uh, Mike had mentioned about, about swinging. Uh, the gates would swing in, in front of part of our driveway. That's not a problem at all. Um, we've got a long enough driveway and, and, uh, there's always something going on, but that's, that's not a concern of ours. It's that wouldn't be blocking the entire one and we can still, uh, we're still, we never park it. Uh, we keep the parking clear anyway. So I can, that's a good concern. I thought his analysis, recommendations were really pretty thorough and, uh, covered everything we were concerned about. But we would, uh, we would love the, uh, crash gates over, uh, over the existing gates. So that's, that's my input right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Suzie Zid- Zidak.
I, I am a Giverny resident and I live in the Monet section of Giverny. So the gates aren't right by me, but we do have the existing crash gates, which work perfectly because they can't fail. I know, um, because I'm one of the neighborhood representatives and I hear a lot of complaints from the neighbors, that the Renoir gates, as we refer to them, are extremely bothersome and always broken. Um, as far as a safety issue goes, them being stuck all the way up or halfway up or all the way down um, is a constant issue. I'm also a realtor in the community and I have a listing on that street and I've heard a lot of negative comments regarding those gates and the way they are right now. So could affect property values in the future for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all of the cards that I have, but certainly if there's anyone else who would like to, um, make a public comment, please come forward.
My name's Timma Point and I live in, uh, on the Spainway, on the Green Hills or Golden Hill side. You can't change this fast enough. I'm sure, I know these guys, I mean, these things are constantly broken. I'm sure it's costing them a fortune. I, in two, 2015, I, this is what we really wanted, the gates like that. And I think that the fact that there's, I don't think anybody else from Green Hills here to even complain about this, because as soon as they saw that what, that this was what was going to happen, this is what everybody wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any other, any further comments? Hey, Care, I don't see any more here in the room.
Okay, any online?
There, there may be one hand up online.
Okay, online, go ahead, please.
Thank you, uh, Jim Williams, uh, nine zero seven two Green Hills Drive. Nine zero eight two Green Hills Drive unbuilt. As of yet, uh, my wife and I, we, we also applaud the idea of a fixed, you know, crash gate. I think it's a great idea. The gates have been, as, as we discussed, cumbersome. Um, Regal, thank you for addressing this. Comod Heights, thank you for addressing this. One small concern that we have is that, uh, currently as the snow is plowed down our dead end street, it seems to stack up, uh, on the sidewalk. Because they have nowhere to push it. Like, it's not like a nice clean, you know, strip push. Would the plan also allow for, uh, some sort of joint? Um, joint effort between the PUD and Comod Heights in a snow removal process? Or are we going to just have these huge mounds of snow stacked up? And if that's the case, can we get like front end loaders and kind of move it to a snow storage facility on the common grounds, uh, somewhere other than in front of the, the, the homes that border that gate?
All right. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments online?
Oh, we have, um, we have one, um, more comment here. Sure.
My name is Scott Bunnell and I'm actually on the board of directors of, of, uh, Giverny HOA as a resident. And so two issues, uh, one that hasn't been brought up is if that gate opens, one of the possibilities, you know, the ski traffic issue. What we don't want is traffic cutting through, uh, from Danish backing up through the neighborhoods to try and cut over onto Wasatch to go up Little Cotton Lake Canyon. So that's another concern that's been brought up. So having fixed gates would prevent that. But as far as the snow removal goes, at least on the Givernay side, which is private, um, the public side, I think you'd have to address that with the city, but um, when we do the snow contract, we have place that we can store that snow and move it to front end loader. We can just either add that as, as instructions or contractually. So from our side, I don't think that would be an issue, especially like with the Dolans, you know, they're next door to that. We want to make sure that they have access to the front of their house and their driveways and stuff, but that's fairly easy for us to handle on our side, but the city would have to address it on their side, I think.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Move that we close the public comment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, any discussion on this item? Do we have a motion?
Um, I move that we approve project CUP twenty-two zero one-three based upon the recommended conditions and findings of fact outlined in the staff report dated September seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. We'll do it in the same order. Uh, Commissioner Steinman?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebler?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelton?
Yes.
And Commissioner Allen, yes. Okay, let's move on to the third item on the agenda. Let me pull that up. We have project CUP twenty-two zero.
Care, can you hold on one second? There's a lot of noise in the, the room right now while everyone's leaving. Can we ask you to take your conversations out in the hallway, please? Thank you.
Okay, so project CUP twenty-two zero one-one, a procedural determination pertaining to a request to construct an eight-foot fence on the property located at seventy-two seventy-five South Calladora Cove. Mike, do you want to go ahead and walk us through this one?
I will spit this, there's no public comment on this. It's just a procedural direction. I'm going to spare the long explanation again. Uh, we've got model motions in front of you. It's just a, a, a direction from the commission on whether to proceed with the administrative hearing officer review or, um, consider this as a planning commission.
All right. Does the commission have any question or any questions or discussion?
I, I've got a couple of questions or comments probably for Mike on this one. Um, I just, I, I had a chance to kind of look over, um, the zoning ordinance and, and also I, I remembered a couple of things from the Utah Land Institute ground rules book that we received. So I just wanted to ensure that, um, if, if, if there's a staff report, um, I noticed in the ordinance that there's two separate standards, one for, um, up to eight feet and one eight to twelve feet. So it's always my concern when, when, when people are building things, you know, have they, are they exactly at eight feet or are they kind of in that middle zone? So the eight to twelve foot requires, um, a, a conditional use with neighbor consent. So if they are actually over eight feet, I, I would want to know what that, i- if that measurement is actually at eight feet or above eight feet, um, as part of the staff report, if that, if they, if that's the direction we went. And also I was just, I, I was reviewing some of the standards of conditional use and I just wanted to make sure that, um, uh, staff pays extra attention in terms of the arbitrary and precious um, aspects of this, just because this has gone to appeals, uh, multiple times. So let, let's just make sure that all I's are dotted and T's are crossed so that we're, we can make fully informed decisions when, when we're looking at this, if we look at it.
That, that sounds good. I don't, there, there wasn't a question there. I understood. Yeah, we, we've processed a bunch of these before, so it does change. Again, the full review will happen in the same manner regardless of how this is considered. I, I don't think we ever, um, avoid dotting I's or crossing T's. So well noted.
Yeah, I mean, it, it just, a- a- as you know, it always gets a little bit tricky when, when, uh, people are, have already done something and are begging for forgiveness um, versus just going through the process.
Think we're at the point for a motion?
I move that we authorize the community and economic development director to act on the commission's behalf in reviewing project CUP dash two-two dash zero one-one in accordance with, um, section nineteen point eight four point zero five zero and, and has been done previously. Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say.
Yeah, sorry. Let me retract that motion. Um, I move that we elect to consider application CUP two-two dash zero one-one as a planning commission without delegation to the community economic development director.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a vote. Commissioner Steinman?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebler?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelton?
Yes.
And Commissioner Allen, yes. Okay, we just have one more item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. Let me get to, it was August. August third, twenty-twenty-two, planning commission minutes. Any discussion on those minutes?
Move we approve, uh, the minutes from August third, uh, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then I think we can do this one as a group. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we have approved the minutes. Do we have one last motion?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, commissioners. Thanks, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.